I would like to call the meeting to order and I guess I should say the date. This is Thursday. This is the agenda review for Thursday, March 2nd, 2023. And I, Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly is absent. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, could you please go through the consent agenda as first?
Item number one, consider approving the February 16th, 2023 business session minutes. Item number two, consider approving the appointment of Eric Haig, 7th District Representative, to the Park and Recreation Commission through January 31st, 2026. Item number three, consider authorizing and submitting the budget for the Johnson County Department of Corrections SFY 2022 Unexpected Funds Award from the Kansas Department of Corrections, KDOC, in an amount not to exceed $86,639.53, and authorize a use of general fund reserves in an amount not to exceed $86,640. Item number four, consider authorizing an annual agreement with Technology Group Solutions, TGS, for the purchase of Cisco Smart Net Maintenance and support in the amount not to exceed $119,447.26 per State of Kansas contract, 47258. Item number five, consider authorizing a contract with Mythix for Oracle Enterprise Business Suite, EBS, migration services at the cost of $370,800, and a one-year term for the Oracle Cloud Infrastructure, OCI, subscription with four optional annual renewals at a yearly cost not to exceed $142,251 thereafter per State of Kansas contract, 48188. Item number six, consider authorizing an annual agreement with Optive for the purchase of firewall maintenance and support in the amount not to exceed $106,648.56 per State of Kansas contract, 46253. And item number seven, consider approving an interlocal agreement to participate in the City of Shawnee's Neighborhood Revitalization Area.
Would any Commissioner want to hear a presentation from the staff on these items? Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes, items three, four, five, and six.
Any other?
And seven.
And seven.
Any other Commissioner have any more comments? So if, on item three, if Rachel, is it Mustad? Hey, I got it right. I get a point for the day. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. My name is Rachel Mustad, and I'm with the Department of Corrections. I'm here this morning requesting the authorization for the approval of Johnson County Department of Corrections, state fiscal year 2022 Unexpected Funds Award from the Kansas Department of Corrections in the amount not to exceed $86,639.53. This funding award was based on corrections percentage of KDOC funds awarded in state fiscal year 2022. Any funds remaining at the end of state fiscal year 2023 will need to be returned to Kansas Department of Corrections. Our plan for allocating these funds is based on one-time purchases to include safety equipment for adult-intensive supervision officers while conducting fieldwork, client services in the form of vouchers to remove financial barriers to success, and equipment for staff quality assurance and development purposes. Our Community Corrections Advisory Board approved this plan, and we are asking for your approval per KDOC standards or procedures. I will now stand for any questions that you may have.
Well, first of all, congratulations. And have you presented to us before?
Last year.
Okay, well, that's short memory here.
I know.
It goes fast.
Commissioner Ashcraft called me out last year, so.
Any Commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Ms. Mustad, I heard your, excuse me, I heard your presentation to the CCA B or whatever those letters are. I just had some incidental questions, so maybe before next week, if we could visit, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Hanslick.
Yeah, this seems pretty straightforward. I would suggest keeping it on consent.
I would like to have it on action just for transparency for the, for the community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner.
Oh, I was just gonna, for transparency, I mean, this, this is, this is little bits and drips and drabs of money, I mean, it's still a lot of money, that are left over from various grants, and I've, in my previous profession, have dealt with that, and you, I commend you for looking at how to utilize this in a way that will serve our residents and especially the folks in Corrections. This is a very standard procedure, so I, I mean, if we want it off consent, that's fine, but I, it's pretty standard.
I agree with you, Commissioner Hanslick, but one Commissioner wants to pull it off, so Ms. Sater, could you put that on action?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Nixon, can you come up?
So I have the next three items I can talk about. So item number four, this is as stated in the briefing sheet, we are requesting approval of an annual agreement with Technology Group Solutions to purchase Cisco Smart Net Maintenance and Support for our network devices. What this provides basically is technical support, software updates, and hardware replacement for any of the network products that we have running. We have about 780 network devices along with 480 network access points across the Johnson County campuses. The cost for this in 2022 was around $80,000. It's increased this year to about $120,000 as we added additional devices, and there were some inflation-related costs as well. This purchase isn't included in the 2023 DTI budget, and the additional cost increases can be self-funded with other cost avoidance measures.
Does anyone have any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Mr. Nixon, before next week, I have some incidental questions and would also like to follow up with you on the email that you sent me related to cybersecurity, so if we could schedule some time.
Great.
And are we leaving that on action as well? On consent or action? I'm sorry.
Action. I'd like it on action.
All right, we'll leave that on action. All right, the next one? Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, as stated in the briefing sheet, we're requesting approval of a contract with Mythix for our migration services and hosting subscription for a period of five years for our Oracle eBusiness Suite software. The county, as you may know, uses this software to manage finance, budget, and human resources. If you recall, we canceled the Oracle Cloud project, which was going to move to a different software product from Oracle, and with the cancellation of that project, now we need to address the current software that we are running and the hardware that is, supports that. The hardware, which is over seven years old, has reached end-of-life, and the standard support and security updates for that software will cease mid-this year, so we need to do something about the environment. We did consider whether hosting this internally or hosting it externally. The estimated cost of the current environment externally is about $3.2 million, total cost of ownership. While remaining on-prem would be about $4.4 million. So by hosting this externally, we believe we will save total cost of ownership over five years about $1.2 million or more. Hosting externally also has some additional benefits in terms of availability, security, and reduces some of the internal support requirements that we would have. This request specifically seeks approval of a one-time cost of about $371,000 to perform the migration work with the vendor, and then yearly hosting costs of about $142,000 a year for a period of five years. Each of those renewals will be optional, of course. Total cost will be about $1 million. The $1 million is included in that $3.2 million total cost of ownership estimate that I gave overall, just to make sure the numbers match. This is included in the budget, and I would also especially like to thank the project team around this one. We had a challenge on how we would do this, and they came up with a very cost-effective and secure solution to do this that reduces the support burden internally to run the software.
Thank you. Any Commissioner have any questions? Can we leave this on consent? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you move that to action? And the, the mic's still yours, Mr. Nixon.
Yes. So my final item, number six. As stated in the briefing sheet, we're requesting approval of a one-year agreement with Optive for firewall maintenance and support. Firewalls are a essential service, a security service that prevents the external threats from getting into our environment. The county incurred a cost just under $100,000 last year for firewall maintenance and support, which has increased to roughly $106,000, $170,000 this year. Most of that is inflation-based vendor costs. We did negotiate it slightly down, but it still is, is higher than the $100,000 limit, which is why we're bringing it here. This is included in the DTI budget, and we expect the cost increases and have budgeted for them.
Any Commissioner have any questions? Can we leave this on consent?
Again, I just think, this is not for my benefit. This is for the benefit of the public, because when we have, when we have.
Well, I understand.
When we have items on the consent agenda, it just looks like to the public that it's just business as usual and that they're not being included in what is happening, and it's not going to take us very long to go through, through this.
I'm just asking, so with that, let's just move along, and can you go ahead, Ms. Sater, and put that on action then?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you, the briefing sheet, looking through them all, doesn't really show the benefits from Oracle to the new, I don't, I would just like that for next week, that, you know, and, and what will be staff costs for this changeover, too, how much? So if you could, you don't need to know, but next week.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Can you say ROI?
Never.
With that, we'll move to number seven, and Amy Meeker.
Good morning. My name's Amy Meekerberg with Treasury, Taxation, and Vehicles Department. The item we have today, for consideration before you, is the renewal of an interlocal agreement between the county and the City of Shawnee to participate in the city's Neighborhood Revitalization Program. As you know, these programs provide tax rebates to property owners, making improvements that raise the value of the property, and this is an agreement that was established first in 2002. The first renewal of this agreement was in 2012, and this would be the second renewal for a 10-year period. Since the program's inception, there's been 60 properties that have participated with an estimated improvement value of $30 million. So with this item, budget and legal have both reviewed and approved this item. We're recommending adoption of the interlocal agreement as presented. I would be happy to answer any questions, and I'd also like to point out that we have Doug Allman with us. He's with the City of Shawnee as the Community Development Director, and he's available to answer questions about the program as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Any Commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you. Ms. Meekerberg, we spoke, excuse me, briefly yesterday. I was interested in the fiscal notes on this, and we didn't get a chance to really have a full conversation, so if, before next week, if we could, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Commissioner Myers?
I would just say, Mr. Allman, welcome. Doug and I, we know each other well from our days at City of Shawnee. When I was at City of Shawnee, this Neighborhood Revitalization Area and Agreement is a wonderful activity that the City of Shawnee has made great participation and, and great results, so very proud of, of this Neighborhood Revitalization Area and Agreement that I was involved with from the very beginning when I, when I was the mayor.
Obviously, Mr. Allman, he couldn't hold a job, so that's why he's here now.
Also, we heard from Commissioner Myers that he was helpful in getting the Herford House in, so. Commissioner Faust?
Yeah, I saw, we did one of these when I was on Roland Park City Council and saw what it did in terms of renovating, rehabbing older homes. Has, has the county always been a part of this? I didn't remember when we did it, if all taxing entity had agreed. I just, I remember Westwood and Roland Park agreed, but all entities have to agree to this?
Great question. So this program specifically, yes, the county has participated in it, and there's a number of different participants in this program. I think this one specifically would be obviously Johnson County, library parks, City of Shawnee, and then the school district, 512, for this program.
You know how, when we did it, we looked at more, you know, kind of the blighted areas. How did Shawnee determine what residential homes were placed in this?
I'd be happy to turn that over to Doug.
Yeah, the KNARA area in Shawnee really does focus on kind of the older parts of the city. It mirrors, in a lot of ways, our CDBG-eligible areas in terms of income and that sort of thing. Most of the map is in eastern Shawnee, bordering Neiman Road down to 75th, and then our gateway from Switzer on Shawnee Mission Parkway westward, kind of almost a flum. But the, the program itself is really tailored towards that older housing stock, the older buildings in downtown that now is being reborn, literally, because of this program. I hope that answers your question, but it's really kind of an income.
Yeah, no, because, I mean, we, I'm sure you did that assessment, too, and I like caring with CDBG. I mean, that's what we really targeted.
Correct.
You know, areas that had a lot of codes issues and so forth.
Yes, yep. It's almost a stimulus to make others do good things to their homes as well, when they see good, positive things resulting from that investment in, in the properties that are eligible.
Well, Mr. Allman, it was also good to see that dogs are allowed in the brewery again, so.
Yeah. Good move.
Yes.
Do you have another question?
No, no, I just, I want to keep it on action. I think that this is a great example as to why it should be on action, because it talks about how the community is being improved with these programs. And if it's on consent agenda, then no one knows, I mean, in the public, it's, it's not, it's not as available, so appreciate your information.
Well, don't shoot the, the Speaker here. I'm just going through the list. It's not that I disagree with you, but I guess we're moving that number seven to action.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Could we go, Ms. Sater, over the action agenda? Well, part of it.
Item number eight, consider authorizing Contract Change Order Authority with Crossland Heavy Contractors Incorporated for the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility, FOG, Mixing System Improvements Project, IMB-1-Contract 33, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and authorizing the wastewater general manager to sign change orders up to $250,000 in total, including a project change order over $100,000 for a contract maximum of $798,692.
Ms. McCarrick, it's always a pleasure to see you, so would you like to go ahead and present?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Susan McCarrick from Wastewater. We have a map up on the screen right now of the Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Treatment Facility. It's located at 69 Highway and College Boulevard. So there's no additional funding needed as part of this request. This request, as read, is for a change order authority only. So the Douglas, the Middle Basin, I'm going to shorten it to Middle Basin, the Middle Basin Facility receives, receives materials known as fat soils and grease, or FOG, from grease waste haulers, and that area here you see is inside that red box. In 2020, we were experiencing some issues with pumping this material, so this material's kind of a really thick slurry, and it was determined that the system mixing was not adequate. In addition, some of the equipment had also failed. So a project was designed, and construction of that project authorized to crossland heavy constructors in April of 2021. And this was done under our facility term and supply construction contracts in an amount of $548,692. The purpose of the project really was to increase the flexibility and reliability of the FOG system through continuous mixing. That helps with the process stability. We end up feeding this material to our digesters, which helps us produce more biogas, which is part of heating the processes, and we can utilize that for producing power at the plant as well, to utilize right there on site. The projects authorized under the facility term and supply construction contracts are paid, they're paid based on actual costs for labor and materials. And this project ended up getting caught in the pandemic. You can see with the timing there. We experienced multiple delays in terms of delivery of materials due to the supply chain issues that caused an overall extension of the project from the original completion date, which was supposed to be of May of last year, to now April of this year. Change order number one is, totals $227,727, and includes inflation of pipe and pipelining materials, labor costs associated with the delays and the complexity of the piping system, and additional scope items, for example, seal water modifications to the equipment, and then as well as the bond and insurance costs that are associated with these additional costs. The full costs of these changes were not realized until the end of 2022, when the pipe manufacturer provided the pricing increases to the contractor. CDM Smith is the design engineer for this project. They've reviewed the change order, and they do recommend it to Wastewater for authorization. In addition to the change order, we included a contingency amount, bringing the total request up to $250,000 to finish the project. We would not utilize this contingency unless it's needed. No additional funding is needed for this request. Per the purchasing policy, any change order over $100,000 does require board approval, and as I mentioned earlier, change order one is $227,000, excuse me, $227,727. And so our request to the board is to consider authorizing change order, change order authority up to $250,000, authorizing the general manager to sign the change orders, including a project change order over $100,000. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any Commissioner have any questions? Mr. Faust? Commissioner O'Hara?
Just, this is in our budget, correct?
Yes, correct. It's included within the CIP, Financial Plan, that we would have presented last year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick? Yes, no, I, I appreciate, again, our wastewater department staying on top of these growing needs. The, you know, the fats and the oils and grease are things we don't think about, and so thank you for making sure that there's a place that is up to date to, to handle those. A question I have, which isn't directly related to this item, but may be tangential, is, are we seeing any issues with microplastics? Do you anticipate we're going to have to adopt any kind of new technology or equipment to, to handle that, or is it, is it handled through our current system? Because I hear a lot about microplastics. I'm not an expert on it. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, no, and I, I would, I'm not an expert either, but I will say that's something that our sector is watching. You know, the EPA is also looking at that. There are being, there are a lot of studies going on with the research foundations associated with this. Our systems are not designed to remove microplastics. That certainly, with a lot of different, what we call contaminants of emerging concern in some cases, in a lot of cases, what we really want to look, look to is perhaps source control, try to, let's just try to keep them out of the system to begin with, because removing them will probably involve additional technologies, so.
So thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers?
Sorry for doing this, but this is two days in a row. Commissioner Hanslick, was that word tangential?
Tangential.
Tangential. That's the second time you've, you've said a word that I've never been familiar with. Very good. I under, yes.
That's the best.
Yes.
Coach, I think when you were in PE, you should have been in Word Power, but that's, that's, and I.
I have an English degree.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
The issue with microplastics, as I understand it, is that when it atomizes, different plastics, some floats, some sink, and some just statiate, and, yeah, that's going to be a big issue, as well as with forever chemicals, you know, that, I don't know, maybe they're one and the same in some cases. And one thing you didn't mention, and I thought you would plug the issue of that disposable towelettes are not disposable, and they add to your FOG, so.
Thank you for being our PR messenger. I appreciate that very much. You are correct.
Say that again?
Disposable towelettes should not be disposed of as the marketing companies would want you to, because it clogs up the system. They, they're not flushable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. McCarrick, a couple of things, I, and we can do this offline, but I would, would be interested in learning more about the cost controls that will be in place for this type of protocol, and I'd also be interested in seeing CDM's analysis of the, the cost increases. You make reference to it, but if they've looked at it, I'd like to know how they've looked at it and to get some assurance that the increases are well justified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Hanslick?
Yes, just two more things to follow up a little bit on. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft, for mentioning that, because I think, I think that the, the idea that just because something says it's flushable doesn't mean you should be flushing it, and that actually that adds to our costs when people are putting things, flushing things or putting them down the drain that really should not be there. So people need to bear that in mind, that, that if you ignore that, you're costing us all more money. Same thing with, just because something says it's recyclable doesn't mean that our facilities at the recycling center are capable of dealing with that, so educate yourself before you throw something anywhere. It may not belong. Secondly, just a question, is, is the HHW still open at Nelson? I know this isn't exactly your.
It's, so it's my understanding it's still open, but I think they're approaching that transition phase. I can, I don't have that date.
Okay.
With me, but I don't, I know that they're working on it, because they asked us a question about the new facility just last week, so.
I just want to make sure folks know if there will be a period of time when, when there's a, you can't take your household hazardous waste to Nelson, or if it will be a seamless cutoff at Nelson and open at the new.
I will, I can bring that information back with me next week. What I, what I will say is if folks are dropping something off at Nelson, they should be aware. You may recall, the board authorized GMP-3 here recently, and so there is more construction activity going on, so just be aware. Obviously, our contractors are aware that there are still people coming in and out of sight.
If you can hang on to some stuff, it might be easier to take it to the new place.
Or just an awareness that there's stuff happening there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and we are leaving that on action. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCarick.
Thank you very much.
So we'll move to number nine, and Mr. Otto, you have the floor.
Item number nine. Consider approving and authorizing an increase of $153,204 for the FY 2022 Airport KDOT Rail Grant Maintenance Capital Improvement Project, bringing the new total project authorization to an amount not to exceed $705,771, and transferring approximately $153,204 from the Airport Enterprise Fund reserves to fund the project increase, and authorizing a change order with TL Wallace LLC in the amount of $153,204 for a not-to-exceed total contract amount of $1,534,620 and 30 cents for the purchase of KDOT Rail Grant Maintenance, IFB number 2022-075.
Mr. Otto?
Hello, Aaron Otto with the Airport Commission. It is one of my goals to come here someday with a one-sentence-or-less action agenda item for you, but. So a little geography first, or a little background and then geography. Last November, you authorized, through a competitive bid process, to implement a KDOT Rail Grant. This was the second of hopefully three, possibly four, that we're going to apply for, to do some massive updates in the railroad system at New Century that you own. What's at play here? This was our first effort. The first grant was targeted at ties, and if we were to zoom in, and if you can look on Ames on your own, you'll even see on Ames the new ties because they stand out so much and how much they're colored differently and haven't been essentially sunbaked over time. That was implemented a couple of years ago. Right now, we're in the middle of implementing this one point, almost $4 million project, a 60/40 state split with KDOT, where we're actually replacing the actual I-beams themselves, the actual rail itself. You know, we have it inspected every month per FRA regulations by an outside party, but it's also getting to the point where we need to have a heavier rail on site because of the weight of rail cars going over it by today's standards. So we made this competitive process to replace about 40% of the mainline rail through this grant effort. One of the things we discovered is, because of cost increases, would, keep in mind, we initially applied for this grant in mid-2021, and it was awarded late 2022. There's a section of rail here in that, in that red box I want to show you, where a lot of tracks come into one area, then they split again. So if we go to the next slide, you're going to see, or a little bit bottom down the page, there are several lines coming into one place. And what this is doing, I mentioned, it's replacing both the I-beams but also switches that are used so that you can combine from going to one track to another, making those choices. We're replacing half of the switches at New Century that date back from about 1942 to 1960 era. So that's looking west. Now we're going to took the next slide, and that's just basically the same spot pivoting and turning, looking east. That switch is a 1942 switch that starts to bring these into alignment. And then if you go further down the track a little bit, you can see there's another couple of switches coming up. We scroll down one more. Those switches are already included. So what we're asking for today is change order permission to add the switch that's in the third picture, a little bit up on the screen, and also the ability to buy a little bit more track. And the reason for that is you can walk down the weight of track. This is 136 pounds for every three foot or one yard. You can walk down track down to what's the standard 90, but you need some transition pieces to do it. And because of how tight this area is with all of those different switches in place, we want to, one, replace the last switch in this area that's not being touched, but, two, replace the track that's needed in order to walk it down, essentially. You can go from, my understanding is, 136 to 105, 105 down to 90, but you can't make the jump from 136 down to 90 because it's just too much of a change, both the height and the width of the rail itself. So that's a change order. It's about 11% over the cost. This is wholly being paid for out of the enterprise fund, brings the total project to just over 1.5. And again, the hope for is that we've already, we've applied, we got told no, we're going to apply again later this year, to try to get the third, hopefully third of three, depending on what the rates come in at, grant to replace the rest of the mainline I-beam track, to have a really repurposed system to put in perspective. It was super exciting. I'll leave you with two little data points. Super exciting to see some of this 1906 manufactured rail being replaced with 2020 or 2025. I mean, we're talking Teddy Roosevelt to Barack Obama era of what kind of distance of time that served. And the last thing, I believe this is acceptable, I brought you all rail spikes that have been in use out at the airport since '42, but most cases were made over 100 years ago. Please do with them as you wish, but I'll leave them in your office. But happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Otto, and congratulations on getting this grant. With that, does any commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Otto, could you remind us of the competitive bidding process we went through for the selection of TJ Wallace?
Yep, absolutely. So we put it out.
TL Wallace, excuse me.
And I'm happy to have purchasing jump in anytime that I butcher this, but we did a formal bid process for this. The state of Kansas had some additional advertising requirements because it was a state grant. There were, I think, five, five or so respondents, and TL Wallace happened to be the least expensive. They were not a group we'd worked with, but we had done some background checks with their references and found that they were satisfactory in what their customer performance had been. And we've had good experience with them thus far, and we're about halfway through the implementation of this rail as we speak.
And do you anticipate using them for the remainder of these projects?
So this is a one-time installation project, if you will. We do have two other firms that do the maintenance and inspection. They also won that competitive project about 2019 or so. That's, every year can be renewed up to five years. So that's the two groups we use for that. They've already expressed an interest in bidding in that when that comes around again in like 2024 or so.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Faust?
Yes, I get the best mementos from Aaron Otto. I have part of the old Roland Park dais in my office. I love how you do that, Aaron.
Thank you for keeping stuff out of the landfill.
Yeah, no. So can you tell me, I'm hearing more, so would, like, us, would we ever connect, like, to Panasonic? I'm hearing some things that Oklahoma might, there might be a rail to Panasonic. Would there be ever any connections to this, to Intermodal, or not? We're just a short line by ourselves. Would we ever connect to Panasonic, Intermodal?
Yep, you're right. It's really option B that you described. So look at, your railroad is essentially the last mile deliverer for products that are manufactured or improved at New Century only. So BNSF, and that's part of this mainline being replaced, will drop off two to 25 cars every other day. Our job with your employees and our railroad is to go out in either store, switchway, do something in that last, we have six and a half miles of track, and it all sits on county land. So I don't envision us ever going off of that county footprint, and it's kind of similar to how, you know, Amazon uses the USPS. A lot of USPS does the background hard, heavy lifting, and Amazon does sometimes that last mile delivery. We really are that last mile deliverer. Technically, all of these people out at New Century for rail services, their customers are BNSF. We just happen to be, it's much more efficient for BNSF and for the customers to actually get served, since there's such low-volume customers, to be in a spot where, again, BNSF can drop off 20 cars, and because I'm the job to deal out those 20 cars into the business park, where they'd have a hard time getting served because of their lower quantities as a direct customer of BNSF in that sense. So to put a bow in it, I don't envision we'd ever have track going off county property or going up and dealing with something like that. We are a true standalone short line that works only on your land for those businesses. Other short lines might do that. There are a number of them in the state, and that's who we competed against to get this KDOT grant, was the number of other short lines in Kansas.
Any commissioners have any more questions?
I just take a quick, I know this is off-topic, but could you update the commissioners on the tower?
So we, so, so at New Century, we have a tower that was inherited from 1942 with the Navy days. It's actually built into the Army hangar that's there today. So we are trying, under a bill grant, to replace that, and I found it interesting, they made announcements a couple of days ago of some towers being replaced, saying really old towers from the 1960s, and I went, well, how about 20 years, what, generation older than that? So we're trying to compete for, and there's an FAA site selection process because it would be built in a different site, to get a bipartisan legislative infrastructure act funding for a new tower. That would be still sponsored-owned. Technically, we own the tower at, well, we don't. GSA owns the tower. We lease the top two floors of it from the General Service Administration. So the goal for is trying to get 15, $16 million to put it on the east side as part of the new development, where it won't have any future obstructions in terms of visibility, but it will also have things like an elevator and some other modern technology that's newer than what's there today.
You're saying, sorry, additional tower, or you'd have both?
One-for-one replacement. So the other one wouldn't necessarily be tore down because, again, it's built into the Army hangar, still being used, but it would stop operating. It has some very significant limitations to look west. If you've not been up there, I'm happy to take you sometime. But the west wall between concrete and concrete pillars is almost obscured, so their ability to see west is a problem. There's also been a couple of hangars over time that have become obstacles to seeing because it's not an ideal location with how the airport's built out, seeing perfectly all the areas of the runway. So between that, ADA, age, efficiency, and the equipment inside, it should be a good candidate. We just have to go through an FAA process about proving where is the right place to put it, basically, which is on the east side at the intersection of the two runways. So fingers crossed someday, the next couple of years, hopefully that will happen. Otherwise, here we are.
So, Mr. Chair, we're on number nine, and we're just finishing up, so.
Well, I am aware that my timing's impeccable, but I have been tracking, saying, thank you, Commissioner Allen Brand for shepherding this agenda review. Thank you very much, Mr. Otto. I believe we were going to keep that one on action.
I was going to move it to consent.
Well, is there an objection to moving it to consent? Why, okay, well, so we'll keep it on action. If you all will indulge me, I appreciate that everybody allowed me to attend. I just wanted to give a brief commissioner comment about the event that I did just attend. We are very fortunate to be living through a very good time in Kansas. For the second year in a row, Kansas has been ranked number one in the nation for private investment per capita. Prior, five years ago, we were, or four years ago, we were 20th and last in our region. So through the efforts of the Department of Commerce, through partnerships with municipalities and local governments, chambers of commerce, Kansas is now leading the nation, and Johnson County is a big part of that. So, yeah, congratulations to our state, to our governor, to our lieutenant governor, and to all at the Department of Commerce that made that possible. I think one of the things that allowed them to do that has been priority and efficiency. I have been tracking this meeting on my way back, and so I did hear the presentations during agenda review. Let me just say, I don't agree with the idea that putting something on consent agenda is not transparent. This meeting is recorded, it is available, the agenda is out and available, and by not putting something on consent agenda, we, I think, have more staff people here waiting to repeat the same items, and I imagine we're going to approve seven to zero. Yet that information is available, it is transparent, and so I'd ask that as we continue to move forward, utilizing transparency as a reason, not to put something we all agree upon on the consent agenda is just kind of missing the mark. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you all for allowing me this commissioner's comment, and I hope everybody has a fantastic week.
Where was your event at?
It was out at the Panasonic site in DeSoto.
Okay. Two times in one week.
Two times in one week, about a 30-degree temperature change between the two days. Today was the colder one, so I'm glad it was brief, and I was able to at least come back for the end of this. So thank you all very much for your patience.
Thank you, Chair.
And with that, was the agenda review at 12:13. Everybody have a great day.
This is yours. Can I?